Executive, by the time he gets here. Okay? Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Thank you. Sunshine Notice, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting, Tuesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is now seven oh seven. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting was published in December third, two thousand and twenty. Issues of the Nutley Sun, Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly will be a few minutes late. Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petrako.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Mayor Tucci.
Here.
All present, mayor, except Commissioner Kelly, will be here in a few minutes.
Yes, thank you. I see we have no minutes this evening, so we'll go into communications and correspondence.
Yes, Mayor. The VFW Post number four ninety-three, Stuart E. Edward Edgar, has submitted an application for a social fair permit to hold a back-to-school night event on Friday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, from seven PM to ten PM at two seventy-one Washington Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey. Need a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
The Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club, Inc., has submitted an application for a social fair permit to hold their football kickoff party scheduled for Friday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, from six PM to nine PM at two forty-two Chestnut Street. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And that's all for communications, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Reports, we will start with Commissioner Evans.
I have a code enforcement report for the month of July.
Thank you. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Yes, Mayor, I have various monthly reports for the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Commissioner Petrako.
I also have a lengthy report for all public safety. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I have a shade report for the month of July, two thousand and twenty-one. Before we get into bills this evening and move on to public comment, we need to have a short executive session. So, can I have a motion, please? Move it.
For contract. Sessi.
Yes.
A contract, executive session for contract negotiations.
Thank you. And litigation, okay. Thank you. I need a second, please.
Second, second.
Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley to move into executive session to discuss contract negotiations and litigation. Be it further resolved that the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and or anticipated legal personnel, contractual matters, and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
The time now is seven eleven.
Seven eleven. Thank you.
We're back. Okay, we are back. Thank you everyone for your patience. We will move on to bills.
Bill list for August 17th, 2021. Bill is by department totals. Public Affairs: $108,643.9. Revenue and Finance: Revenue and Finance, three million, twelve thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and four cents. Public Safety, fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars and eighty-nine cents. Public Works, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. Parks and Public Property, ninety-three thousand, nine hundred forty, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Water Utility, one hundred thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. Payroll for Friday, August 6th to 2021, regular payroll total, eight hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars and nineteen cents. Overtime payroll, thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Total payroll, eight hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars and four cents. Grand total, four million, four hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Move the bills. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you very much. We will now entertain a public comment on agenda items only, please.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizen comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mayor Tucci, I have three questions this evening.
Sure.
The first one is on Mr. Evans, the resolution for 18521. If I read that correctly, will the Nutley Volunteer Rescue Squad be eliminated completely? Is that the way I understand, I understand this?
Yes.
When that's eliminated, the volunteer rescue squad, will that become its own entity?
It, would you like to answer, please?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So, this resolution is the town accepting the plan of liquidation for the rescue squad. As of June 7th, the rescue squad has moved into the fire department of the township. This rescue squad itself will cease, it will cease operating and, and the remaining assets will return to the township.
That, I don't much understand, but they'll be part of the fire department, is that correct?
Some portion, the service is part of the, uh, fire department. There are some, uh, paid employees and there are some volunteers and there's some per diems that are part of the, the fire department today, correct?
Ultimately, will they, the employees, regardless of what their position is, will they become a town employee under this new resolution?
Uh, that's up to Commissioner Petrako.
Mr. Would you like to respond to that?
They already are.
But the per diems.
They're under Public Safety now, under the township.
I, I'm sorry, Mr.
They're, they're under the township as they have.
Thank you. Two places, I believe it's Mr. Evans as well. Your bill for Millennial Strategies, 2100466, I, I see that down here a lot. They, they write for the, um, for grant funds, aren't they?
Correct.
To, how many grants? Because they seem to be on the bill list frequently for about three thousand dollars. Do we, do we get a lot of grants back from this money?
Yes, every year, we, we get grant money and grants. Uh, I have, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's generally more than a million dollars a year of grant benefit that we get as a result of that.
And the last question would be, the League of Municipalities, you're paying sixty dollars, is that for the online seminars coming up in September?
Rory, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
On your bill list, the League of Municipalities, it's sixty dollars. Is that for the League of Municipal and seminars that are coming up? I believe it's in September.
It's a registration for the league, but it's, it's actually going to relate to, the league is now looking at having a in-person session in November.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Uh, Board of Commissioner announcements, we're starting on the right side of this thing, Commissioner Scarpelli?
I don't, I don't have any announcements, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Petrako.
None, none at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans.
Absolutely not.
Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to talk about our proposed parade of gratitude for the veterans. Uh, in lieu of the evolving complex situation with Afghanistan, uh, the Nutley Board of Commissioners has decided to postpone the parade of gratitude, which was originally scheduled for Friday, September 17th, 2021, to a later date. Uh, in particular, developments pertaining to a return of troops within, uh, Afghanistan. Uh, and the parade was intended to be though, in a parade to honor those who, uh, served in Iraq and Afghanistan. So with the, with the return of troops to Afghanistan, with the volatile situation going on over there, we didn't think it would be appropriate at this time to hold the parade, but we do look forward to holding it, uh, in the future. If you have any questions, uh, feel, feel free to contact our Veterans Affairs, uh, head, Dan Jacoby, uh, at the Nutley Veterans Affairs Bureau. The number is nine seven three, two eight four, four nine five one, extension two four eight for additional information. And I, I know this time has been particularly tough for, uh, all veterans, but especially Afghanistan veterans. It's kind of been like a gut punch, uh, and if you, and Gold Star families as well. If you, if you're, if you're struggling, uh, feel free to contact Vincent the Notaris. He's a veteran that we have, uh, on staff here, uh, at the Nutley Public Affairs. Uh, he's a licensed counselor. His number is nine seven three, two eight four, four nine five one, extension two four two eight. And as always, the, uh, the National Veterans Crisis Line is available, one eight hundred, two seven three, eight two five five. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances. I see we have no ordinances for introduction this evening. Um, and I don't see any ordinances on, uh, on second reading or any public hearings this evening. So I will turn over the 2021 municipal budget presentation, uh, to Commissioner Evans in one minute. We need to go back to Commissioner Petrako for one second.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We do have some, um, sad news to report. I just would like to request a moment of silence. Um, Frank Signorelli passed away, um, suddenly last week. Um, he was one of our, um, actually, he was a friend of all of ours, I'm sure. But he was one of our crossing guards, um, later in life and his, his passing is really sudden and, um, we're, we're doing too many of these lately, but if I could request a moment of silence, um, would appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very sad news. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the first, uh, item tonight is to have a public, uh, hearing on a resolution to amend the budget that was introduced on April 6th. Uh, the budget amendment, uh, does, basically does two things. It lowers, uh, costs in various areas, uh, to net of, by about four hundred and six thousand dollars. And it also reflects, uh, the, uh, finalization of our negotiations with the state, uh, regarding our state aid. Uh, as I, I mentioned, it's changed. We now have been successful in, uh, uh, negotiating permanent aid going forward in the amount of 2.6 million dollars. We no longer have to go through the, what they call transitional state aid application process and negotiation process. The net effect of the aid was that, uh, in 2020, we received three million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of aid. The aid this year is two million, seven hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred. So it's down by roughly about four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars from last year. That was anticipated in our earlier budget. Uh, so this amendment addresses those changes.
Would you like to continue?
Does anybody would like to comment on, on the changes?
Seeing no comments, please continue.
Move to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Uh, the second, uh, task for tonight is the adoption of the 2021 budget. Uh, we received approval from the state for, to, that would allow us to adopt our budget. Uh, as we've started to do in the past, I have a slide, uh, presentation on the budget that will be posted on our website. And before the commissioners, uh, vote on the budget, we'll walk through that presentation. Uh, it shouldn't take more than an hour or two to get through it.
That, that's a, that's a bad Evans joke. Please continue.
So, so. Look at him sweat. So, Sal, are you, uh, able to put it up or? It's, uh, that's, that's other people who are on Zoom. We gotta do that old fashioned way. John, you remember one of those looks like, right? Just gotta warm up too.
It's like a lot of us.
Okay, so, uh, let's go to the next slide, right? If you want to look at the, the total budget for 21 and one single snapshot, right? Our total operating costs are fifty-six point seven million and, uh, our revenues are fourteen point nine million, almost fifteen million. And the amount we have to raise from taxpayers, uh, is forty, forty-one point seven, seven, forty-one million, seven hundred forty-four thousand dollars, which also includes the, the library. Uh, what's important about this is, is the, uh, which I'll explain in, in the slides, is that the amount of money to be raised is, uh, lower than anticipated because of a real allocation of the state aid. As I mentioned, we've gotten less, we've received less state aid by, by four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. But because of the form of the aid, the allocation is different. So while the municipal side goes down a little bit, the school and the county sides have gone up. But the overall, uh, it has no effect on the overall increase for the year. Uh, we'll, I'll explain this in, in, on a later slide. But absent the change in the aid allocation, uh, we would actually have a, an increase uh, of about 1.5 million or 3.69% increase on the municipal side. So at the end of the day, for the taxpayer, it's just right pocket, left pocket. Uh, and it's, it's only in, in terms of the allocation of aid. If the timing was different, uh, in the receipt of the aid, we would have been able to allocate it differently. But because of the late timing, it's the way it comes out. So it's basically a, a timing event. Uh, if you go to the next slide, I put this in here because I think it's important to understand. Over the last, uh, several years since 2014, the state, the town has received 28 million dollars in transitional state aid. Half of that has been allocated to the school, uh, and, uh, and lesser's amount to the municipality. The savings that the average taxpayer is 2,784 dollars, uh, in a cumulative basis. And now with the aid being permanent at 2.6 million, right? We would, uh, we now no, no longer have to do anything with that. So our future in terms of aid is more secure. Uh, the effect of that change in the allocation simply allow, basically provided for is that the money went directly to the bottom line to, for tax relief because under the rules, it has to. So, uh, we complied with the state requirement that while we didn't allocate it, it did go to, uh, tax relief. But overall, it has no effect on the overall tax rate, but it is distortive to the components. Uh, the, the next slide. If you then look at really what the effect of that is, right? When someone looks at their tax bill, they're going to see that the municipal portion of their tax bill is actually pretty flat or down a little bit. But you're going to look and they're going to see that their school and their county bill, portion of the bill are up very high. But once you adjust for the, uh, allocation and, and actually look at something that's more normal, then you would see that the, uh, the, the effect on the taxpayer to get to that average of 4.77% is that the municipal budget is up 3.69%, the school is up 4.7% and the county is up 4.62%. Uh, what's important, uh, about, about this is that, uh, that we understand that it's only because of an allocation, uh, change in an allocation that the rates look distortive, uh, for, for the taxpayer. So it's basically here, uh, to say, as you can see, it's just shifting around money in pockets. But the tax bill, we had estimated it was up 4.8%, reality is up 4.77%. So, uh, basically, uh, there's not going to be a, a significant reduction in taxes for the fourth quarter. In preparing the budget, you know, you see a lot of numbers and if you tried to read the state form, it'd be very difficult to understand what is behind the budget. So just, I put together some slides that kind of lays out some quick commentary. First, first off, is that because of the way we were prepared for COVID and the success we've had with reimbursements under the CARES Act, uh, we, this budget, uh, has not been significantly impacted by, uh, COVID-19. We did not have to go through a significant, uh, freeze in, in personnel, uh, reduction, in, excuse me, in reductions in personnel. We didn't have to look at furloughs. Uh, we were able to compensate, uh, all of our employees in the normal course, uh, because we were able to manage very well within the boundaries of, of the COVID reimbursements. Another piece that I've been asked some questions about is the Federal American Rescue Plan Act money. We have received some money, uh, to date, about 1.4 million. Uh, we have to determine, uh, how we use these funds, but it's very clear that the money cannot be used for tax relief, uh, purposes. So as such, none of that money is included in this budget and that's a federal guideline. Uh, as I, as I, as you looked at the budget on the first slide, right? Last year, we had a zero increase because we had reversed out a tax appeal reserve. That's a one-time benefit. We had to account for that, uh, this year as lo, along with lower transitional state aid and the elimination of the COPS grant. Those are all things that have influenced the revenue side, uh, of, of our budget. I've included a slide in slide 11, you'll see it, which, uh, lays out what the water utility looks like. Uh, and we can go through that and, uh, you can see that in more detail. We won't go through it. But, but because of the controls that are in place over the water utility, we're not looking at a water rate increase this year. We also had to actually absorb, uh, as a town, the, uh, liquidation of the emergency rescue squad, which is now part of, of public safety. You know, after our revenue recovery, it's increased spending by about 203,000 dollars. We were able to anticipate 275,000 dollars worth of revenue billings to get the cost down, but we were not able to fully offset that cost. Uh, as you're well aware, we have many redevelopment projects, uh, going on in town and our budget includes, uh, 625,000 dollars to cover, uh, those, uh, costs. I believe that those costs are temporary and they're more short-term in nature, short-term being the next couple of years. Uh, but, uh, we hope that, I mean, we expect that, uh, ultimately those costs in a later year would be reimbursable, but it's actual spending now. This budget, budget is based on the assumption that other than accounting for, uh, steps and overtime and some minor changes in base, uh, on a targeted basis for a handful of people that has occurred, this budget assumes a 0% salary increase, uh, township-wide. So police, fire, uh, the dispatchers, the teamsters, parks recreation, DPW, and all the other, uh, non-union employees. So police, fire, the dispatchers, the teamsters, parks, recreation, DPW, and all the other non-union employees. On a bright note, you know, the, one of the things we've been able to do is manage our debt. We have the ability to borrow up to $140 million. Our debt outstanding is at $17 million, about 10%, a little over 10% of our authorized borrowing power. And when you look at that, you know, one of the things that's, that's been clear is we've been able to lower our municipal debt costs by, by about $600,000. We've been able to maintain our bond rating. And overall, the town's, the town's assessed value hasn't gone down. It actually has gone up by about 11 million against 3.2 billion. Right now, there's a townwide revaluation going on, which will affect property values. But understand, when you do a revow, valuation will rise to a fair, to a level with fair market value. But in doing so, our spending doesn't increase, so the tax rate gets lowered. So while we'll have some shifts occurring on individual properties, overall, the town does not make new money as a result of a revaluation. It's a shift in the allocation of how taxes collected. Our state aid is now permanent. We've talked about that. I won't spend any more time on it. There is a potential that with redevelopment that's going on in town, on three, Chiccolini and other areas, that there, we have the potential for some revenue, new revenue coming into town. But that really won't happen until at the earliest, the 23, 24 timeframe. And that's aggressive to see coming in then. I think it'll take longer, but we're hoping by then we'll, we'll see it. There's a slide in the deck. It says, that's the last slide. And basically, that slide shows how municipal dollars are spent by area of service. And I'll go through that in a minute. But overall, spending since 2014 is up 12.7% or on average about 1.75% a year. We do have a new hire freeze and a quarantine on non-essential spending was established in 2020, and it remains in place for 2021. So all of those comments are underlying assumptions on how the budget was prepared. This slide summarizes, you know, what happened to revenues. And as you can see, you know, our revenues are down this year by 1.6 million, almost 1.7 million dollars. It's primarily two things. The loss of state aid in about an amount of 487,000 and the reversal of a one-time revenue item from last year that we don't have this year was a tax appeal reserve of 1 million, 1.1 million. So you add all that together, that really labored the budget this year because we have had a significant loss in revenue. One of the, and that's been benefited because simply we would, we would be looking at a much larger increase in the municipal budget if it hadn't been for ultimately, at the end of the day, how state aid was allocated in the, in the budget across the three municipal areas. As with everything, you know, you gotta get to costs, right? So overall, our, our costs are up about $316,000 before you look at state, the state aid benefit that we received. Salaries are up a net $117,000. Public safety is up 257,000, which includes the squad as well. That's substantially offset by reductions that Mayor Tucci had instituted, be actually before COVID hit to drive, to really resize his department, which saved about $157,000 in salaries. Most other areas are at zero. There's a net increase of about $18,000 in public affairs. So overall, that's the salaries. When you look at other expenses, every year, we get a sewer charge increase. It's been higher than the $73,000 this year. Every year, we get a pension bill, and the pension bill is up a net $350,000 this year. This, the bill that we received is based upon the headcount that we had in town as of 2018. The state is behind two years. So there will be other charges coming. And we've had some increase in headcounts, which will affect that going, going forward. The emergency rescue squad costs are up $116,000. And there's another piece of that that's included in salaries to get to the total 203,000. As you can see, other items are listed there. Some of the bigger ones, the medical, net medical is down $173,000. We've had some benefits in, in medical insurance over the last couple of years. I think that's pretty much behind us. So we'll be facing a different, different outlook next year. Debt service, we've done a lot to manage our debt over the years. And we've been able to reduce our debt service costs. And you can see the other items there. So on a net basis, absent reductions in medical and debt service, you know, our expenses would have been significantly higher this year. And that's a one-time benefit. So net, net expenses are up $98,000. I'm not going to go through this slide. It basically lays out the water utility very clearly in terms of its revenues and its expenses. There's been nominal change in the cost of water operations since 2014. But it's up roughly about $300,000. So, so far, the water utility has been very stable. I put this slide in there because it, it's a pretty easy way to look at debt and put it in terms of, but many people have had experienced already as a mortgage. Our debt is roughly $17 million. It's at an average interest rate of about 2% over 10 years. We've been able to continue to keep the borrowing costs down and manage our debt through a capital management program, which has served the town very well. The latest bond sale that we had this year, we were able to actually cover of that 17 million, we were able to, you know, get a bond for 7 million of it at 1.6%, which lowered our average. This slide is, is, is a summary slide. If you wanted to have one slide that, that basically explained to you, and anybody who wants to look at it is basically what's the money that is spent to provide new municipal services? It is laid out here by service areas. This isn't commission department. This is by service areas. So, so all of the people costs, including salary, pension, payroll taxes, medical insurance, are all fully loaded into each area of service. That's different than the way these dollars would show up in our budget. But we did this to basically create a lot of transparency around our budget and where, where the money is spent. The town has made some very significant investments since 2014 in providing police, fire, EMS, and municipal court services, which has been directed by Commissioner Petracco with the support of the board. It's basically, you know, when you think about a town, we provide for the health, welfare, and safety of, of the community. And you would expect that your biggest cost will be in this particular area. The next area is roadways, sewer, maintenance, sewer treatment, right? Recycling and street lighting. So streetlights come on, roadways. You know, that, that costs about $7.5 million a year. Primarily, the increase from 14 relates to the annual increase we're getting in our sewage treatment charges for the township. The other costs remain generally flat. The next item is insurance, other insurances other than medical, so liability, workman's comp, and so on. Those costs have steadily risen over the past several years. The reserve fund collectible has increased, but it's been stable the last, last two years. Parks are, all of our parks, all the recreation, all of our buildings, the trees, electricity, telephone, you see all of those services together. And when you look at from 2014 to 2021, they're generally flat. We've been able to control those. Same thing with administrative services. You know, when you think about everything in Town Hall, treasury, municipal clerk's office, the purchasing function, the assessor's office, the code office, including legal and IT, when you, when you throw them in there and any of our redevelopment spending, it's up since, it's sort of comparable to 2014, but it's up since 2019. And that's where the temporary costs for economic development reside and some of the legal things we're going through. Absent that, that, those dollars would remain much closer to the 2019 level. You look at health and veteran affairs and so on since 2014, it's substantially flat. It's up a little bit. Debt service, as I have already talked about, is down since 2014 by, you know, about a half a million dollars. And that's just, we've been managing that. Library services is, is part of the bill, and that's a million six. And the increase from 14 just generally reflects the increase in assessed value of the township and, and some of the 2% adjustments that we made. So as you can see on one slide, you now have the, you know, a snapshot of how money is spent by service area of the township, which directly relates to all of the taxpayers in town. When you look at it, costs are up 12, over 12% since 2014. On average, 1.75%. Given some of the things that have been in the budget this year and, and last year, that average has been held down. I do have a concern about how those, these, these dollars by category will flush out for 2022 because some of the offsets that we've been able to apply for over the last couple of years are, have now been exhausted. So overall, that's, that's the presentation. Would anybody else like to comment on any of this?
Mr. Scarpelli?
Yes, no one likes a tax increase. None of us. We have to pay it just like all the rest of the residents. But I think if we, if you look at where we were seven years ago with Roche pulling out of the township and where we are today, being able to get that transitional aid converted into permanent aid and survive the seven years. And if you look at, you know, the 1.75% increase over, over that time, I think that, you know, that's a good story to tell. And thank Fisher Evans for all his hard work with the state in getting that transitional aid over the years and also negotiating to get permanent aid.
Thank you, Commissioner.
As far as public works is concerned, if you, you look at it, we've been relatively flat over that, that time, except for our sewer costs, which we can't control. That's a state valley sewage, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Christian Petracco?
Yes, I like to thank Commissioner Evans for putting this all together. It's every year we do it. I, I don't know how you find the time to do all this, but thank you. And I would also like to acknowledge everyone in my department for all the hard work they did through COVID and police officers or EMTs or firemen or dispatchers or our staff over there as well. And I would especially like to thank all the mayor and all the commissioners for entrusting me with the biggest portion of the municipal side of the budget to put it to good use. And I like to thank the residents for supporting our departments as well, but especially public safety because, you know, when the alarm goes off and we respond to anywhere in the town within two minutes, I think that's saying something for public safety. And I know the costs are hard to manage, but I think we've all done a great job. And I like to thank everyone that's sitting up here tonight for their support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. One, one thing, I, I do want to thank every, every commissioner here on this board. And I want to impress upon the, the community that this was a Herculean effort to get this budget down to where it was. I've seen, I've seen the multiple versions of this budget. And I can, I can assure you, there's no fat left in this budget. It's, it's whittled down. For, on my end, some of the things, why, why there's an increase, garbage. The contract was negotiated before my arrival here, and it's just, it's just a set increase. And then, and then with the salaries, obviously, we've been going through COVID and there's been, been some overtime with that, so that had to be accounted for. Like I said, I did a very deep dive for the budget. And there, there is no fat left in, in the, the public affairs department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, I don't think you have anything else to say at this point?
I think I said enough.
Okay, I, I think you're right. I'd also like to echo some of the previous commissioner's comments. I think Commissioner Evans did an outstanding job in putting this budget together. Are we happy about a 4.7% increase? Absolutely not, okay? But for all of the reasons that Commissioner Evans has stated, this is where we find ourselves, all right? I also want to commend him on the outstanding effort, all right, that he put forth in negotiating permanent state aid, all right, with the state. I mean, it's, it's just slightly short of a miracle, all right, to get the state to move and to correct, you know, years of inequities with some of our surrounding municipalities, all right? When there's really not a lot of clarity as to what goes into that formula, okay? It's, it's, it's been a hard, hard year for us. I'd like to thank and congratulate all of the commissioners on all of the hard work. Again, we're not happy with the increase, but this is where we find ourselves, all right? And I think the one thing we can guarantee everyone in a township is that we will always give you our best effort. We'll do everything in our power to make sure that your township is safe, that you're safe, your families are safe and secure, that you have outstanding services, whether it's police, fire, EMS, DPW, revenue and finance, public affairs, or parks, all right? Which as, which was already mentioned, we had a decrease this year, all right? And that's in large part because of the efforts of the folks in the Parks Department, all right? And in automating some of the tasks that we did manually in years past. So I'd just like to congratulate everyone. For those of you out there that are watching this evening, not a happy budget, but under the circumstances, it's the best that we could do. And you can, you can bet your last dollar that moving forward, we will do everything in our power to hold this, this tax line. And with some of the projects that are on the horizon, like the Diamond Springs property, the Chiccolini property, and the continued redevelopment of On3, we're going to turn the corner, all right? We're going to make sure that this township remains at the level that we're all accustomed to and that our standards are not diminished in any way. So thank you, everyone.
Mayor, just, Mr. Serenelli, would you like to comment?
Mayor, I had prepared a couple of statements because you always ask me, how do we compare?
Yes, I do.
Just a few brief comments about the budget. Having, you know, watched Nutley through the budgetary process, I think there were a couple of highlights. Most of them were covered by Commissioner Evans. But, you know, I think the preparation that's gone on in the last six, seven, eight years for the shutdown that took place last year and some of the lost revenues, et cetera, Nutley was prepared. There's been preparation going on for a number of years. As the run-up was taking place, we identified that that was not always going to be the, the way. And, you know, you can identify that Nutley was prepared when those revenues fell out. But you still were able, in my opinion, to give no tax increases last year, when in my view, it was more important last year to not have an increase than this year. You know, if you look at the two-year average, 1.8% increase over two years, it's below the cap and below inflation. You know, staying under the appropriation cap of 2% over a seven-year period, that's remarkable. You know, inflation has been higher than that in some years. And I think the thing that I noticed, I noticed most about Nutley's budget is the cost containment concept. You know, you've been developing and brought in some new revenues. You know, you've been developing and brought in some new revenues and new pilot programs, new development, et cetera. But you have kept cost containment as a priority so that your increases have been reasonable over an extended period of time. And I think lastly, you know, every year the state was trying to eliminate a little more state aid, eliminate a little bit more state aid. The good thing about next year is you don't have to deal with that. Your state aid is permanent now if you continue with the cost containment that you have and some of the revenue development that I know you've been working on. Looks like the, a bright future for Nutley compared to where we were seven years ago.
Thank you, Mrs. Arnell.
No other comments? Then.
We're good.
We had a comment here, we discussed the budget, we just have to adopt. We did hold a public hearing on the budget in April. So tonight, all we have to do is move on the adoption. So I will read. Be resolved, the council commissioners of the township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the budget herein before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorizations in the amount of forty million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and eight cents for municipal purposes, one million, four hundred thousand, sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents for the minimum library tax. This budget sets forth that the total appropriation for the year is fifty-six million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and seventy, seventy-nine cents. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco? Commissioner Scarpelli, Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, you might as well just continue. You're the next one up on each other.
Commissioner Kelly?
Sure.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm, I'm done with the budgets.
Okay, I thought you wanted to go into your regular resolution. We can go to Commissioner Kelly and come back.
It doesn't matter to me when, when I do this. I just have a couple of resolutions on August is a, is, has some, a couple of observances. Resolution number one nine six two one, whereas leukemia, lymphoma, myeloma and myelodysplastic syndromes, MDS, are types of cancer that can affect bone marrow, the blood cells, the lymph nodes and other parts of the lymphatic system. Whereas approximately every three minutes, one person in the United States is diagnosed with blood cancer. Whereas an estimated combined total of one hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy people in the U.S. are expected to be diagnosed with leukemia, lymphoma or myeloma in two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas new cases of leukemia, lymphoma and myeloma are expected to account for nine point four percent of the estimated one point eight nine eight one six zero million cancer diagnosed in the U.S. in two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas blood cancers can be extremely complex with some patients requiring bone marrow stem cell transplant as part of their treatment. Whereas an estimated one million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, twenty-seven people in the U.S. are either living with or in remission from leukemia, lymphoma or myeloma. Whereas the health and vitality of the residents of Nutley are significantly enhanced by local efforts to increase communication, education pertaining to blood cancers, raising awareness of the disease. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey recognizes September as National Blood Cancer Month and urge all citizens of Nutley to support efforts and activities that bring awareness and education to finding a cure for blood cancers during the month of September and throughout the entire year. So moved.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye, aye, having had personal experience in this area, gladly aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli? Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
The next one is resolution number one nine seven two one. Whereas every year, communities across the country face emergencies from unforeseen natural disasters and deliberate acts. Whereas during the month of September, we encourage residents to rededicate themselves to important tasks of being prepared in the face of any crisis. Whereas the best time to prepare for an emergency is before it happens. Residents should take time to review their own emergency plans and update their emergency kits. Whereas by discussing with our families, friends and neighbors, how we will protect ourselves and our communities, we can contribute to the, to, to and share in a stronger, more resilient society. Whereas federal, state and local agencies have resources to share with the community as to how to put together, put together personal emergency kits and plans such as www.reddy.gov and www.fema.gov. And now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey recognizes September, two thousand and twenty-one as National Preparedness, Preparedness, Preparedness Month and encourage all Nutley residents to, to recognize the importance of preparedness and work together to enhance our resilience and readiness. So moved.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco? Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
The last one I have is resolution number one nine eight twenty-one. Whereas there are more than three point one million men in the U.S. who have been diagnosed with prostate cancer. Whereas one in eight males in the United States will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in their lifetimes. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that in the United States for two thousand and twenty-one, about two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty new cases of prostate cancer and about thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty deaths due to prostate cancer. Whereas aside from non-melanoma skin cancer, prostate cancer is the most common cancer among men in the United States. It is also one of the leading causes of cancer death among men of all races and Hispanic origin population. Prostate cancer, whereas prostate cancer occurs mainly in older men, about six cases in ten are diagnosed in men aged sixty-five or older, and it is rare before age forty. The average, the average age at time of nice diagnosis is about sixty-six. Whereas males in the United States with one family member diagnosed prostate cancer have a thirty-three percent chance of being diagnosed with the disease. Males with two close family members diagnosed have an eighty-three percent chance. And males with three family members diagnosed have a ninety-seven percent chance. Whereas there's no noticeable symptoms of prostate cancer, while in the early stages, making screening is critical. Whereas educating people in the United States, including healthcare providers, about prostate cancer and early detection strategies is crucial, crucial to saving lives of males, preserving and protecting families. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey declares September as National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. It further resolved that we urge all men and their families in the Township of Nutley to seek assistance in obtaining facts and information about prostate cancer. And encourage our residents to support Nutley in, Nutley Football Alumni and their effort to benefit prostate cancer research through their annual Goff for a Cure event on Monday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. So moved.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Now we will go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. First resolution, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer being is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of tax charges for block ninety-seven oh one, lot five, qualifying code C thirteen fourteen in the amount of two thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. So moved.
Sir. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas certain grant fund appropriation balances were lapsed to the current fund surplus as there were no other future grant charges foreseen at the time. Whereas it, it has been determined that those grant fund balances must be reestablished. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County of Essex, that the following appropriated grant fund reserve balances are hereby reestablished. COPS grant in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-one cents. So moved.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas the Nutley Volunteer Emergency Rescue Squad has voted to dissolve its New Jersey nonprofit corporation and wind up its affairs. Whereas on April fifth, Nevers signed a memorandum of agreement with the Township of Nutley in which Nevers agreed to take all necessary and reasonable steps to dissolve its nonprofit corporation and transfer all of its assets and the EMS operations to the Township of Nutley. Whereas pursuant to the New Jersey Nonprofit Corporation Act, Nevers is required to adopt a plan of complete liquidation and dissolution, which plan sets forth the mechanism of dissolution and ultimate disposition of assets. Whereas Nevers has proposed a plan which designates the township as the recipient of its remaining assets following the payment of all outstanding debts and obligations in accordance with the certificate of incorporation as amended. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the County of, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, the Township hereby acknowledges and accepts the plan of complete liquidation and dissolution of the Nutley Volunteer Emergency Rescue Squad, including the receipt of its remaining assets following the payment of all debts and outstanding obligations. It further resolved that the mayor, township clerk, Department of Revenue, Finance and the township professionals being hereby are authorized to take all such reasonable and necessary actions to effectuate the same. Before I say aye, Commissioner Pacheco, you worked tirelessly on this. And this is simply the final piece of paper that says it's done. So moved.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas the building department has received a performance surety bond in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents from TFJ Kingsland LLC property located at ten Kingsland Street. The, the planning board has reviewed, has reviewed and determined that the, in effect, the performance surety bond can be refunded to TFJ Kingsland LLC. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer being is hereby authorized to refund the performance surety bond for the storage facility at ten Kingsland Street in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents. So moved.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Whereas Vivint Solar Developers submitted and paid solar panel permit. I assume it's a permit fee for Coiman Avenue in the amount of two hundred and ninety-two dollars, which was deposited in account C zero one nine oh four nine oh three. We received a request in writing to refund the permit because the panel was not installed. Whereas this permit is comprised of a thirty-three dollar DCA fee, which cannot be refunded, a twenty percent plan review fee, which cannot be refunded. The remaining two hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents is refundable. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the municipal permit fee of two hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents be refunded, refunded to Vivint Solar Developers LLC. So moved.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pacheco?
Yes, be resolved by the town, be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise seal bids for surplus equipment that is no longer in use by the township. The equipment vehicles are listed below, two thousand and three Crown Victoria. Be further resolved that above equipment is available for inspection on Wednesday, September first, two thousand and twenty-one, between the hours of eight thirty, eleven thirty a.m. Contact the Nutley Police Department at nine seven three two eight four four nine four seven. If interested in inspecting the equipment, be further resolved that the equipment is to be sold as is and where is. And seal bids are to be sent to the municipal clerk, township of Nutley, one Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, by Wednesday, September eighth, by eleven a.m. prevailing time, at which time they will be publicly opened and read via Zoom. I move the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
So I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. We're a seal bids for surplus equipment no longer in use, but the township received it open on Wednesday, July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas Jersey One Auto Sales, four ninety-five, four ninety-seven Tunnel Lee Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, was the highest bidder on the equipment vehicles that are listed below. And whereas Liberty Motors, seventeen oh five, seventeen oh seven Kennedy Boulevard, Jersey City, New Jersey, was the highest bidder on the equipment vehicle bid below as follows, nineteen eighty-six Auto Car. And now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, State of New Jersey, that the sale of the surplus equipment be awarded to Jersey City One Auto Sales on Liberty Motors Incorporated and that the mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the township of Nutley and move the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas an application has been filed by Woodcroft Steakhouse, Inc. for a person-to-person transfer of a plenary retail consumption license, number zero seven one six thirty-three zero one eight zero zero six, heretofore issued to KJM, Inc., trading as American Bistro, for premises located at twenty-four dash twenty-six Washington Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey. And whereas the submitted application form is complete, nor respects, the transfer fees have been paid and the license has been properly renewed from the current license term. And whereas the applicant is qualified to be licensed according to all standards established by Title thirty-three of the New Jersey statutes, regulations promulgated thereunder, as well as pertinent local ordinances and can, and conditions consistent with Title thirty-three. And whereas the applicant has the closed and the issuing authority to review the source of all funds used in the purchase of the license and the license business and all additional financing obtained in connection with the license business, now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley does hereby approve effective August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the transfer of the after said plenary retail consumption license to Woodcroft Steakhouse, Inc. And does hereby direct municipal clerk to endorse the license certificates of the new ownership as follows. This license, subject to all its terms and conditions, is hereby transferred to Woodcroft Steakhouse effective August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I move the resolution.
Sir. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye. It be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer being, she is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amount listed below to the folks at fifty-six North Spring Garden for overpayment of rec soccer in the amount of seventy dollars for the year two thousand and twenty-one. I move the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye. Whereas Michael Robert Cammott, Jr., sadly passed away on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Michael served as a past committee member for Nutley's Annual Relay for Life Event. And whereas Michael contributed his tireless efforts to the community while assisting in raising funds and finding a cure in the fight against cancer. Whereas Michael represented IWF in the Nutley Chamber of Commerce from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen and participated in chamber functions, meetings and community outreach appearances. And whereas Michael represented IWF on the executive leadership team for American Cancer Society's Relay for Life of Nutley from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen and participated in all fundraisers, volunteer activities and community outreach appearances. And whereas Michael is a former IWF American Champion, Tag Team Champion and Junior Heavyweight Champion, Michael was voted IWF Wrestler of the Year by the fans of two thousand and fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. And whereas Michael truly provided us all with an example of unselfish, thoughtful and generous service to others of how to live life, thinking of others and working for their benefit. He contributed to the community through his service and will be missed tremendously. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey, join with the citizens of Nutley to celebrate the life and accomplishments this young man had achieved and extend our sincere gratitude for all he has done for the Nutley community. I very proudly move this resolution.
Second. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye. This next resolution is very lengthy, so I will just hit the highlights if that's okay with our attorney. Thank you. Whereas the following settlement agreement has been presented to the Board of Commissioners. All right, whereas, excuse me, Quest Parcel has been developed with the two hundred and fifty thousand square foot diagnostic testing facility and related parking garage, which Quest, Quest currently occupies and operates pursuant to a certain master lease between the U R E as landlord and Quest as tenant. And whereas railroad tracks owned by Norfolk Southern Railroad, known as the Nork Industrial Track, bisects the former Hoffmil Roche campus. And there are currently two locations where internal private use roads cross the rail line at the same grade. And whereas as part of the project, Prism plans to make changes to the crossings. And in accordance with the memorandum of record and record of decision from the NJDOT, being docket number NJDOT thirty-three two being docket number NJDOT 332018P and docket number DOT 342018 to make them available for use by the general public. And whereas the DOT is the State of New Jersey Agency responsible for the regulation of at-grade railroad crossings pursuant to Title 48 of New Jersey statutes, and the NJDOT has promulgated regulations regarding the same at this location. And whereas the committee included representatives from the DOT, Norfolk Southern Railroad, PRISM, Quest, Clifton, and others, but not Nutley. And whereas in the course of the committee meeting, the DOT and Norfolk Southern Railroad took the position that would only be acceptable to convert Isabella Street Crossing and the Prismway Crossing from private to public crossings and to relocate the Prismway Crossing if two other existing public crossings were closed. Whereas the DOT identified for potential closure of the crossings of Highfield Lane, all right, in Nutley, along with the pedestrian crossing located elsewhere designated, both of which crossed the rail line. Whereas after considering Nutley's opposition on February 28, 2020, DOT issued orders, all right, and DOT allowed the construction and opening of the Isabella Street Crossing and Prismway Crossing, and on February 7, 2020, issued ordered, orders directing the Norfolk Southern Railroad to close the Highfield Lane Crossing and others. And whereas in April 2020, Nutley filed timely appeals of each of these orders to the Superior Court of New Jersey Appellate Division in several dockets. And whereas these matters were later consolidated under one docket, and whereas the parties requested the court refer the matter to the Civil's Appeal Settlement Program. And whereas having attended several mediation sessions, the parties have arrived at a mutual acceptable agreement, now therefore be resolved in between the parties, which lays out DOT's obligations, PRISM's obligations, Nutley's obligations, and Norfolk Southern's obligations. Now therefore, be it resolved that this agreement as written, be moved and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I move the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarbally.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Before I vote, I'd just like to commend our township attorney, Alan Janet Temple, for the hard work he put in with outside counsel to make sure that this Highfield Lane Crossing remained open and that there wasn't a berm built, which would absolutely be a blight to this entire neighborhood. I vote aye. Whereas the township of Nutley, Department of Parks and Public Property are the owners of a building at 537 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey. And whereas the building located at 537 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey suffered significant damage as a result of a storm, which has created significant structural damage, which is endangering the health, safety, welfare, and integrity of the adjacent buildings and the safety of pedestrian traffic. And whereas the township of Nutley, Department of Parks and Public Property, has need to demolish the township-owned building at 537 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey because of excessive structural damage sustained, which is endangering the safety, welfare, and integrity of the adjacent buildings and the safety of pedestrian traffic on an emergency basis. And whereas in accordance with NJSA 40:116, the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, have declared an emergency to exist and the need for the immediate demolition of the building. And whereas in accordance with local public contracts law 48:116, the emergency waives the need for public bidding, and Carivella Demolition, Inc., 40, DeForest Avenue, East Hanover, New Jersey, can safely demolish the building on an emergent basis at a cost not to exceed $175,000. And whereas funds are available in capital account 3455A and insurance reimbursement, and have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley authorizes that a contract be entered into on an emergency basis in accordance with local public contracts law with Carivella Demolition at a cost not to exceed $175,000 to demolish the building at 537 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, otherwise known as the Chickalini Building. The entire amount will in fact be reimbursed to the township, if it hasn't already been reimbursed, to the township for this demolition. I move the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarbally.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations. St. Mary's Catholic Church, license number 2221, for an off-premise raffle on Friday, December 24, 2021. Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club, license number 2321, for an on-premise raffle on Friday, September 17, 2021. Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club, again, license number 2421, for an on-premise merchandise raffle on Friday, September 17. And Nutley Irish American Alliance, license number 2521, for an off-premise license raffle on Friday, December 10, 2021. And whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the affirmation licenses are approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. I move the resolution.
Second. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Pacheco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarbally.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting this evening. I'd now like to open the meeting up to the public.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizen comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mayor Tucci, I have two questions this evening. The first question was, I was going to ask the status of the Chickalini Building. Is it for sale? Is there any movement on it?
Mr. Moore, as we've said at several of the meetings.
I'm sorry. As we've said at several of our other meetings, there is a redevelopment plan and a rehabilitation plan that exists for that property. The first step is to make sure that the property is in fact safe. The building continues to deteriorate.